Clear, Gamoarolkon.
Senator Lencheer Basilius?
Oi.
Senator Cecilil Eldebeel?
Oi.
Senator Gubaygi Kweinabo?
Oi.
Senator Brian Mlayray?
Oi.
Senator Sikfrit Bay Nakamura?
Oi.
Senator Enlati Pedro?
Oi, Ngatya.
Senator Tijey Yamru Romosaw?
Oi.
Senator Mark Weblaw Rudim?
Oi.
Senator Gazugui El Tapsunino?
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal?
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Tolams?
Oi.
Senator Mayson Yireh Abanal Wips?
Oi.
Flo Lider Gray Mariur?
Oi.
Vice President Stevenson Chek Quarte?
Oi.
President Hans Paulis?
Oi.
Mr. President, anya kuru?
Anya kuru, bodontira Flo Lider Gids, Senator Mariur, bol motigay gide raureled, Senator Mariur. Oi, se Maliltsul Legorga President, Marbikl Senators, Bodonmurna Raureled, bo Iron Four Raqalender Gid, Aringi sel Fifteen Day Journal, Maqmov Four Regular Session, Maqmov Adapt Seid Journal. Sige da motion namdu neeseg, namtirge roguy goongeldu oi. Obtok, Namai, Flo Lider. Bodonmurna Iron Five Raqalender, aringi aigal Communication na Presidental Ming, aringi se Prescom 12-105, at yanga transmital Presidencial Proclamation 25-407, Andregal Presidencial Communication 12-106, Transmital Avil, Establis la Office of the National Security Coordinator. Aringi Prescom 12-107, transmital Executive Order Number 497, 12-08,递告Transmital Response and Communicate Questions and Saudi Saudi Fund Development Loan. Igayamna Presidencial Amnesia, medim notwa bo ra, gira proper taqalender bo sini Comment, bo Iron Six ra Communication na Department Hetsel Mae, ngaysel Departmental Communication 12-10, Yanga sel Aroki Financial Report for Fourth Quarter, Neendra September Dooriya 2025. Regalim notrengi, bo ra Iron Seven ra Communication na Selbital Blail Mae, edaka Communication, bo ra Iron Eight, Bo ra Standing Ariakamiti Report. Maqmov adapt tercel Standing Ariakamiti Report 12-47, girela House Bill 12-1-181. Dilar me? Oktira certicese President? Certices. Bodonge sesen urgide el mora order, Flo Lider? Oi, se Presidente, gade mlo ra, Iron Eight, Rastening Kamiti Report, se mlo Ogolase certicese, mang, taygida Kamiti Report, namim, el altaim maqmov adapt Rastening Kamiti Report 12-47, Girela House Bill 12-1-181. Sige da motion namdu neeseg, bodontira Senator Nakamura, lenyat chairman JGA, bo lbeskida report, Senator Nakamura.
Surangi Mr. Presidente, Atyal, Yanga standing Kamiti Report Number 12-47, House Bill Number 12-1-181. Tanyi, Mr. President, asel Bill Four Act, Mulasul Molaal, Amendra Talek Seventeen, Doori Three, Doori Four, Ah, Thortina Mafori. At yanga Bill abel introduceni, atartogot yanga Bill awal bol amende gayda sectiona Palau National Go, del momelisi, esel togora Drac Testing Requirements, Algilera certain employees kabalment, create sel Drac Enforcement Fund, madrigal sel ngaysel Drac Rehabilitation Fund, regal mo increase abe penalty sel certain gild Drac offenses. Tyal Bill abel introduceni, ah, By request His Excellency Surangal Wips Junior, representar Belao, sel Januari Sixteen, Twenty Twenty Five, mlo ra House, Mina House, melangmlamela Kamiti, misel al megim, mlo misel Kamitirga, Mr. President, au rakport yanga Guma galom sodha yanga Kamiti Report, ngisola se, oisela se Kamitirga, mlo sopir ngare teelil, ma dugra Ministry of Justice, Post Office, Customs and Border, Ministry of Health, Melaw Deswir, algiler tial Mulasul algilera Aigale Terbengela laal, ma mo marobi Art yanga problem, algiler feysel ngay, abul belal togora draks. Mang Kamiti Report, ayamanamal kamata, ngikmotanga lagunita kolonial retra droguya, ki mo kabur aigal bebi lamutok, telangal se. Auera, sel, isola diwaise, lola rewarda se sel El walmne version representar besak Kamitirngi, om, sin deringi gire roguya Kamitirga singungila al bol togoi, Egilingi, edregal mle doela bebi rekel kolon dasa, kamitirgalaseng a, girel mosoiswa, esel tial mulasul mola. Al waise, agulunita se me Ensedra muwir tial verbaidem, isola dimo, omesa se laseng aigal amendament ra ala. Ego re dikxolulil, smodik, gayda lulasul amendament. Magote Esel gotel bo da amenderingiya Asel Section 419, 425, ma 128, aigale Talek Doori Three. Talek Doori Three, masada rekel wale singual payment ra Aigal togora wale Salari, ma step increases ra Togora Civil Service. Odsoela kamitirga wale sing Instead ra Aditigay gide designated employees, Girel, girel moriquara drac testing, mo roguul adel Logiora aqabalment. Ngaryammo, matamaral laa sukum, gade dikmulkmo roguul adha logiora kabalmenta El diaal tigal designated employeea momala ra drac test. Agutumela luun Ma laa, abul belao, asel tial cel bo, muwa adhal, ordira adhal momala drac test, esel toguni om kabalment, Egawa, amlammo consider sel Komom search ra, Esel, amlammo invade sel while privacy interesting, asel togora constitutional law. Angara, atogora garegriila ma Alula garegriila mong Ndaksebeela, aigal, lemeltira adha ngare, agutumela, aludel girela privacy theorem, a search, a girel protect. Ndakse edulial laal, di, ulase roguul adha aqabalmenta, girel mo O, malak tial El test. Indi disola kamitik, asing, amotaim, ndakal dil, tigal designated employees tira wale bulish, Ma ar, ar noors, At tigay gide adhal wale logior, klangara adha ngara imorir, Health, ma safety ra adha ngara imorir, Ambebinga, ndakal dil, girel di, tira momala testing, girel gider rogu. Alol otela, kmulk mong, kada malal serious, El mo Algiler tial togora draks, mang gider roguya mo malara A test. Di ulmang, ndakal ulma, gamitim, mlosisipreni tial El Section Talek Doori Three, Masia adhal kuk, ndakal designated employees, El kuk, rerela, ndakal, inbol ra Ah, asa, aklangara adha ma lubeng, health ra, Eh, en girel momala drac test, Sel tal obom Molar se gide wale dudulaseng Step increase ra, mo lusaklaududem. Basukum, nsumelma u se gide nasaklaududem, mo lusak step increase ra, amlammo evaluation maharan, en girel, regal mosak mitra, negative El drac test. Au, ulma kamitik, asesei al atarolela, sumsodha lalgider roguya bodola drac test, En girel Expert tial gide, telitaal, ma wale valentieri, ngel adhal momalani. Of course, adha sukum, atil malara, ndakal olha sel drac test, tigay gide non-designated employee, En Ndakal u, sel wale bol step increase, sa current versional. Sel debora Ah Chet kial sisil El Lulasul Talek, malo da Talek Doori Three, eginlo O, bruungil mo consistent, lo ngirel bebi ra section, mang Aadha mo positive ra employee ra kabalmenta, mo positive ra Ah, drugs, Ah Especially gire dudulaseng Control substance, Ah Ah Gire Gire, aktila ngat, tigay gide employees tira da designated, eh, dedikanu Talek Doori Three. Ah Angania defense, ngil, kmo, tial drugs lugu laaringi, amlinga prescription atokta ngalngirul miskak, Mal takpositive ngaral Oxycodon, ma lubeng, girel whatever drugs, narcaric, En ngania defense, ngil, asendiak Yanga biskaka, tokta ngaral, mlimingil guru. Migidu kuk osisi employees, non-designated employees, Asukum kuk, otiya, ulasel tial Present setel control substance, angal cel abadenge, Eh, ditiya dimnak, valentieri u, otangisyo goeng, wal, sipadikmaseng, ndakal El passive. Aadha mo Oh, tigay gide employees sel Civil Service, sel tira mo receive yanga positive mandatoril, Positive drac test, asukum ta mo positive, Eh, ngania teelil, momala sel, ngirul test, sel mo verifala, se sel milagot, Test mle positive ma duwen. Malal positive test ma duwen ya. Basukum, tongdela se Ah O, yeng positive, ngel management official, ngania, girel dismissal, ngel employee, ngi, notra kala. Ah Tigay Ah, atset kial mulasul mola, Sel first el test, Bol kaberingiya national government, motigal employee, employment, tigal employee. Esesukum Gal adha mo positive, sel momala sel wale sing confirmatory, ma duwen, ngirul test, sel mo confirm, se yang malal positive, ma duwen False positive, esegida bol hararingi, girela. Regal nga, atset kial Talek Doori Three, kamiti lulasaseng gide amendesel 12-2, Eh, sel mo masada tigay gide already tangan existing laal, tigal girel el altaim, tamala atest, Random, random el test, ngaringiya Arbulis el altaim, existing laa, a girel malal test, ma customs officer, immigration officer, airport security, quarantine officer, yama malle Kamiti, aliliyanga physician, ma nurse, ma lab technician, Wealalogist, ma dentist, ma bus driver, Chauffeur, heavy equipment operator, ma boat operator, mangidil employee El tira wale mulut aurior, El Logior, loruringi, aklangara adha ngara wale imorir. For example, a om bus driver raskula, multangara raskula, klangara ngara raskula ngara Imam, ma om Toktang, eng Klangara adha ngar Imam, ngirel, kaol tokta ngar, regal girel momala test, om noos, momala test, asing, ngania Ah, makitelgal, ngalcel abadenge, ma duwen. Existing laa, kas regal masia employees, motigay gide elected, appointed officer national government, Tira performer sel ngaral, esesukum negligence tira Ah, wale constitute, ma lubang mo threat ra public health, ma safety, En, en, sipielen, ngaygide management official, ngia mo decide, mo requiringi, momala test. Ah Sel Debora esesukum, ngaral consequences, sel tigay gide adhal momala test, asukum, gide blacktung, Sel section tira bill, setel Kamiti Report, asing Ah El me de decisioni, ma sel na regional versional president, asing, ngaygide adha Al mo pasariv, Ah, certain narcaric, Tigay ya Sel first Modeka ngaygide, lasing mo ra Ah, Rehabilitation, ma Se, bilup, ma wale, asel sumkap positive certain drugs, for example, wale Methamphetamine, Gayda togora kitelgar ice, gbo mregal logior. Ah, sel bo mregal logior, of course, ngania gide defense, sel gala setyang biskaga tokta. Di mregal logior, ndi, adha modeka logior, asel mutal Mo reemployed, asegide government agency after one year, yanga ngania Successful Se, naungil, sipielen, mo complete drac rehabilitation program, abel blel La, recognizing, ngia Ministry of Health, Human Services. Taratogo ya adha, sipielen, mo positive, ma ice, ma determinater, ngi, ending, morabruagwa, mabrahuriping, mablamregel, Ministry of Health Ah, recognizesel rehabilitation program, aseng, complete, ngi, sel me, sipielen Ah, el mutal moriora after tarar, sel gotel El El Terminatingi, begoset yang Makitelkl, karal, na alzar. Sel Regal bo da Amenderingiya, sel kuk, ne Talek Seventeen, Algilera Drac Rehabilitation Fund, El altaim ya current laha, awal ngaygang, lo al, maringisela dudulaseng Forfeited Property Fund, Drac Rehabilitation Fund, egadamnamo change sel dimo Ah Maringisel Drac Rehabilitation Fund, Ma Forfeited Property Fund. Aldasa, kasi elang Ma onitase, instead ra Kalabay Ah Aigal fund, el malung fund, sel mangaya ra forfeiture, kala, bulasase, asukum, aadha, bill, miye, El Dil, girel makitel kala, eh, agorta forfeit, aigal kloklel, se imli, ngest, ngi, Aigal ulaval, infurtherance, tial crime, Esese edalo, kabalmenta, elang, sipielen, lotrao, ma depasite, forfeited fund, Masukum, aadha kuk mo pen, penalty, ngi, ege, kuk mora, aigal Drac Enforcement Fund. Aldasa, asalabay, maiga, gide Adha miye, ma Ah, Rehabilitation Fund, ma iliyak, Eh, Forfeited Fund, ah Amoringi, Eh, gor ya, el fifty fi, miye, gire ludod, ra forfeiture, ma gire fines, El Fifty Fifty, eh, olbina glula, mo expand, ngaygide, mo authorize appropriate, ngaygide ludod. Ah One instance, asem, sel, maybe, sel submit, gale, other finances, sel submit, gale, togora wale fines, eng, ol ndakal ungil categorized, Bebi altaim, aadha categorized, ma aldasa, asem, ednga, gale, split, gale, gide proceeds, gale, gide Fines, ma Ah Otrolela, gale, gide forfeited, kala, El malo tour, alcela, malo aray, gale, gide tool, separate fund, adha, Ministry of Finance, aomes, eh, gole Olbina glula, bo authorize appropriate, gey, masukum, kukonsonsa enforcement, mina Drac Rehabilitation Fund, Et tira, olbina glula, lotod, mo fund, asing. Aigal El Togora Rehabilitation, Ah Bodonmitra Ah, maigel ludod, todel girel Rehabilitation, el bo spea Ministry of Health and Human Services, apol Which is ya, bila glula, adregal mo authorize appropriate, ah About global develop, implement, enhance, aigal Drac Rehabilitation, ma recovery programs, ah Ah, provide, aigal eh Eh Maintain, establish, maintain residential, ma lubang blind, ma outpatient treatment facilities, motigada dospe anes, Gal mo provide a counseling, ma therapy, ma support services, sel mo tigay gide adha El tira suffer, tigay gide Drac, substance abuse. Regal gil fund, Drac Rehabilitation, bodolaba train, ah Higher healthcare professionals, sel tira specialized, addiction, addiction treatment, ma recovery, Regal Mo laba support, gale aftercare programs, Eh, malas, mal help, etil, mang ndakal prevent, tira adha, dospe anes, wa ndakal relapse, Eh, sipiilen, ngania ungil long term recovery. Ah Sel Debora, sel togora, se increase the penalty, webloga Amendra, sel Talek Doori Four, Chapter Thirty Three. El altaim Mr. President, aadha, asukum, mang traffic, Ma lubeng Hmm Lotrao, methamphetamine, Cocaine, Ah LSD, Ah, wa morphine, Mangidigay, gide dudulaseng opium derivatives. Ngel adha, mo, a, om traffic, alba kotrao, Eh, gamnada dugra, penalty ga wa twenty five years, ndakal, bo riya twenty five years, ndakal, bo ra fifty years. Se existing la. Kamiti, dimnakal change, sel existing la, Aigdimlo edra, angar, atset, sel schedule two, El drugs, methamphetamine, lobongela, fentinil, fentinil, el anga, si, regal mo global, sel, di wale, aice, Twenty five years, sel mo fifty, asukum, ba traffic, Distribute, traffic, abulase kotrao, ngi, kadi, sumsatara, distributing, ma tarah. One of the things, sel, sel Me, original part of bill, Ah Le draft, ngi, sel first meeting, msel na House, sel me, ametala togora possession. Possession, asel, asel adha, ngania, tial makit, ngobank, tial makitelgar, Tial narcaric, medim, tial illegal drug, Eh, eh, gamitigay, bulis, gamitigay, ngi, ma lubeng Lobank, Ngia, amle, bana lea, ngul, obak, tial kala, En En wale Bol galbus, ra, delongolela, five years, ma ten years. Esel kuk, mle, togora, sing gobanga ice, ma fentinil, Coming, ah On possess, one gram, ma lubeng lesa, En current laa, between five, ma ten, Ediskum, gobanga kuk, more than Ah One gram, egadamnada dugra fifteen, el mo Doori Five Years, el El Tasel, togora ngara possession, Doori Five Years, galbus. Gage, sel wale, blara A gage, l-increase Penaltira possession, aice, tiam, na, asel original bill, president, asal dulu, kili, me, El mle, baynilul, mo twenty five, ma Doori Five, kamiti, lundaasa, se, kale, donatil, mo fifteen years, ra ku possession, more than one gram. En, chedoral, mang, a gie, musikal experience, ngara ulmo, A gie, medisala, se, possession, more than one gram, lundaasa fifteen, ala sabi. Ah Endi, wanakot, la, cloud tutalele, lundaas, ngay Sel Por sel bill, ma lakamiti report, por sel, ngaysel section Doori Three, otura possession, El angin Atasukum Kaol adha momala test, Mo positive, Ya aldasa, akmulase Kawa, poseset yang Klaal, tialka. Ndakal Possession, ala, ala, setyang, bo, obak, tial kala, wetel, perdoni. Endi, mulasul mola, akase Om, on possess, mteal, on possession, a mo include, gide dudulaseng Hmm, asel substance, ah, present, sel ngia, nga, atcel abadenge. Ngalcel abadenge, mending, of course, ndakase edel measure, asel mteantel, grama, nga, atcel abadenge, padadi, mo mulaseng less than one gram, nga, atcel abadenge. Yanga, mal, telgibel, meri ngi, La, Mr. President, ngania, telal bulu, ablam, regel, lokspe, ngi, Endi, kamiti, om lundaasa, asukum, mal malal, so adha, el fight, Tial drugs, drac problem, ngirel, misi, al udd, Mang tomira adha, adha, mendinga, se ali, asukum, mo positive, ngania teelil, motutaqra possession, possession, a mal global, sel. Mang, mal diorgide, lasing Asel, yang, kada magrada, taqal, ngi, Endi, ah, ndakal din, ngara penalty, kuk, sel El Togora Rehabilitation, sel bill, sel lortogora, eh. Regal ngania, ah Ah, mlegim, kamitim, le, om dasu, asen, amenderingi, El Ah, gide dudulaseng, togora laa, kada se incovete crimes, incovete, bulaseg, gide dudulaseng, ngania attempt, solicitation, Conspiracy. A gable, ol, bebi altaim ya, lechea, ala, akmaseng, ten years, minimum, a ten years, abal, sel, Eh, gole, tira plea out, akmaseng attempt, mang mo dibuseng, gire ten years. Ma girel lila, asendiak, asukum, ga plea, attempt, asukum, ten, a minimum, senten, selka, half, segide Lemax. Mang tomir, wal, tomir, segide, plea agreement, etil, laseng, aadha Daga sipielen, mo, amotutaq, eh, endi, penalty, ngi, aadha, asel mal, mo misa, ngadiu, endi, mo half, segide maximum, eti penalty, di five, gal. Sel Tara A gimlilit, kial la, el aya, mo, dudulaseng katangel, ilmoringi, Ah, sel, togora, el rabil, ngirel, asel dudulaseng Sen sentencing guidelines. Ma gage, gide wale minimum, senten, sel blacktung, more than one gram, fifteen years, on possess, on possess, ma Less than one gram, aice, five years, A gie, basakli, se, laagorta, mo, o decide, lase. Se, el depart, sel minimum, togora laa, sente, el moriora, se, laagorta, decide, lase, moriora, segide minimum. Eh, masa, agorta, masa teelil, laa Ni girel, sel, ngara, ablam, regel, ngania, gide sentencing guidelines, endi, bela, va, nding, wale, asegide, decide, sahala, kamiti, asel decide, hadeli, yang, asentencing guidelines, at yang. Ta, togora possession. Magorta, sel, wala, bos sentencing, ra adha, su, momes, ra, ngal adha, lase. Ngal adha, ngania, prior felony, ganviction, ngi, Ngal adha, motutaqra, mal shoa, mal Clo, genuine remorse, ma lubang, mal, uargan, ngul, ilmilita, tala, mal, le
Proposal amendment to the law of the law system for taking the as a provision that was taken more test negative. Uh, the legal most of the most subject and the la more ma- uh, more uh, uh, with in grade increase. So you know, uh, when we say again, call it go around more complicated the implementation, take it in particular section or to come here with the increasing Chris my merit increase. Then sell the person structure, uh, uh, the salary structure of the movement. But I thought the money I get the car use a pay grade, my yield got us a again, uh, fourteen and pay, uh, steps, uh, it's a pay grade. Yeah, it's a step on any I get the mail. I get it, but I thought I'm gonna take me a sense of step one and more step five and every year it come a come a lot say it, uh, uh, within great increase. So, so the W G I, uh, near to your satisfaction performance employee. And so my employee, uh, uh, at end of the year, uh, supervisor, uh, evaluate the performance in the, uh, satisfy satisfactory and above and automatically click and move say it will be the increasing grace. Um, so the work merit increase, uh, all to your, uh, so my, for example, uh, employee, uh, really, uh, my government outstanding lawyer, uh, um, the heroica act and get my claim on, um, merit, uh, uh, additional compensation morning. And several, like I give the employee no merit increase. So you can see it along with the merit increase, then also issue time period. Um, let the other link more or any take it the book, uh, provision on our team, uh, the other another condition, uh, other several more step increase. And several well, uh, uh, the book, uh, well, complicated the uh, take it the implementation, take it the particular section, where I'm not so realize it. Then, uh, me, me, yeah, the legal what several months I intend to. Like we said, uh, uh, like it, uh, to solve the drug or drugs, but take it requirement testing, uh, employees or certain employees or designated employees. And the other goal, my name is a total drug, uh, I'm a good, and they are, they are other employer, employer of government, uh, more, uh, uh, earlier, uh, of government. Uh, uh, the positive drugs, my living, uh, the drugs, uh, uh, but I don't get plus in, uh, the drugs, and get it, uh, get it, uh, get it most accept for, uh, disciplinary measure, my living, uh, suspension. Um, well, uh, uh, the spirit, the more part that take it, uh, for a total within grade increase, my a just a salary employee. And what, uh, who comes in, uh, the ball distort the tail, take it, uh, look, uh, mocktega take it, uh, particular section. My quarter, uh, the mention or say, uh, uh, I'm not sure, uh, uh, more appropriate in the way to address this. I assume so the reward, uh, employees, uh, the more test the drugs. Uh, uh, the total result that till negative. And when that says, uh, basically, say, uh, standard, uh, so the message. My, uh, expect to hear our goal employees of government. Um, uh, do well, more, uh, oh, but take it, well, reward system, look more performance, low value, reward, uh, other, uh, uh, more tested negative. Uh, when that's a one, uh, the clear, uh, some so the reward, uh, other more more test than my negative test result. And the clear more equal section, uh, look, uh, for rewarding, uh, take it, uh, the other valent elite more test, uh, test negative. But the goal, clear, equal, wording system, uh, reward system, uh, more, uh, take it, uh, employees. After all, uh, 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 back employees, uh, are expected, uh, negative, uh, drugs all the time. So you know, uh, for a point, uh, president, uh, the so called maker, you go, uh, uh, did, uh, not turn him, uh, uh, the continue more, uh, uh, discussion or talking, uh, also, uh, the direct, uh, considering. Um, uh, direct, uh, the, uh, for a, uh, not easy, uh, not turn him, uh, chairman, uh, uh, sell, uh, page ten. Or sell, uh, so the say it, uh, look, uh, for amendment, uh, more sell thirty-three, uh, P N C D thirty-three, section four twenty-five. That's, uh, that's, uh, so the, uh, uh, while Minister, uh, Human Resource, uh, Culture and Tourism and Development, uh, which take it, uh, Bureau of Public Services, uh, system, my, uh, only take it Ministry, uh, uh, one, and then sell the real mirror. Sell the real mirror, sell next page, uh, page, uh, eleven. And the book more sell the under a definition. And, uh, and look, uh, the define, uh, Minister, uh, while Minister of Health and Human Services. The good thing, my gang, uh, car use, uh, the, uh, the sound, and then uh, who, uh, I'm say, give the, uh, for a more conflict, uh, a definition, uh, Minister, uh, as a look, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the rest, uh, in the, uh, Minister, uh, Human Resource and, and Culture, uh, uh, I get the R C T D, uh, Minister. My, uh, the so called point out, uh, you get it, Chairman, uh, the, uh, the, the make sure consistent, uh, when they are, uh, uh, any, uh, conflict, uh, a definition, uh, uh, what's actually written in the, uh, uh, take it, uh, proposal amendment, uh, the rule. I get it, uh, Chairman, uh, Sula, uh, uh, party, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, point, uh, uh, point is out earlier, uh, uh, the, uh, mess, uh, uh, the, uh, discussion, uh, uh, the, 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 uh,
Now, Sula, uh, Senator, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, blood, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the lawyer, uh, of government, um, uh, agirid, uh, the, uh, one, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, like, uh, separate, uh, issue. Then, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, employee, uh, of government, uh, lots of, uh, uh, la, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the, 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 uh,
So, uh, the, uh, the, uh, section thirty-three, four to five, uh, sell, uh, twelve, uh, two, uh, so, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, sell, uh, for, uh, sell section twelve, uh, two. And, uh, the, uh, so the, uh, 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 designated, uh, more, uh, uh, uh. I'm not doing, uh, saying, uh, confusing, uh, I'm not, uh, I'm not, uh, explain, uh, saying, uh, 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 testing, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, sell, uh, title thirty-three, uh, so the, uh, 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 uh. I saw, uh, my good, uh, 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 my, uh, uh, the, 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 uh, my living, take it, uh, employees, uh, 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 quarter, uh, my good, uh, sell. Uh, quarter, uh, the, uh, 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 the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 boy, uh, 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 why say? Uh, of government, uh, 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 infringe, uh, get the, uh, saying, privacy rights, uh, 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 unlawful search, uh, like, uh, the, uh, uh, uh. The, uh, 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 this, uh, my, uh, 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 the, uh, 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 because, uh, 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 I'm a bit, uh, uh, the, uh, 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 and get it, uh, more voluntary basis, uh, sell, uh, 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 with, uh, 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 with in grade, uh, uh, uh. And my, uh, 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 voluntary, uh, negative, uh, uh, drug test, uh, uh. The, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 constitutional, uh, uh, prohibit, uh, uh, get it, uh, unlawful, uh, uh, inclusion, uh, 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 protect, uh, privacy rights, uh, uh. My, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, Supreme Court case, uh, Chandler, uh, Blum, uh, 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 so, uh, my, uh, the, uh, system, uh, 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 the, uh, the, uh, 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 my, uh, the, uh, Chandler V Miller, five-two-zero, uh, Supreme Court case, uh, Blum, uh, 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 uh. Uh, uh, Blum, uh, 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 overturn, uh, get the, uh, universal drug testing laws, uh, unconstitutional. The only time, uh, 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 my, uh, uh, saying, uh, 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 because, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 um, sell require, uh, 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 okay? Um, uh, uh, so, uh, I'm a bit, uh, 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 is to allow, uh, 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 of course, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 submit, uh, voluntary test. So, uh, 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 um, um, and these, uh, my, uh, the, uh, 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 um, uh, the, uh, 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 in the first place, uh, get it, uh, 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 uh,
Senator Inabu. Uh, hello, uh, the, uh, uh, Senator, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, subject, uh, uh.
Uh, the, uh, uh, the, uh, 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 so basically, what, uh, what we're saying, uh, 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 the, uh, uh, the, uh, 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 of government, uh, 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 mandatory, uh, 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 whether, uh, uh, annual or, uh, uh, regularly. So you know, uh, one question, uh, uh, the, uh, constitution, uh, provision of constitution, uh, the, uh, 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 mandate, uh, mandatory, uh, uh, drug test, uh, 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 including, uh, take it, uh, the, uh, 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 designated employee list, uh, 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 uh. Why say, uh, the, uh, 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 um, um, uh, 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 um, uh, 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 you're going to get them, uh, 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 while prohibited, uh, uh, the exception, uh, 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 designated beneficiary, uh, not, not, uh, designated employee, uh, safety, uh, health, uh, life, uh, 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 uh,
Senator Inabu.
So, uh, uh, President, uh, man, uh, the, uh, 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 employees, uh, 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 public sector, uh, uh, drug free. Um, uh, 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 the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, 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 bring them up, uh, to his attention. Uh, uh, and I hope, uh, uh, saying, uh, 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 um, uh, 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 affected by substance abuse, provide counseling, therapy and support services for individuals affected by, uh, substance abuse. Uh, uh, sell number six, uh, uh, page twenty-four, uh, from the saying, uh, 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 community-based initiatives, uh, 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 victims of, of abuse from, uh, because of drug abuse. Um, uh, the, uh, 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 um, uh, 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 former Senator, uh, one, uh, former Senator, uh, 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 sell program, uh, 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 just say no to drugs, uh, school, I think that was really good, uh, uh, get it, uh, 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 sell sentencing. Sentencing, uh, 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 include, uh, 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 depart downward from minimum sentences of incarceration. Well, good luck, uh, 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 well, good luck, uh, 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 aggravating factors that must be considered in determining any departure from this section. So, uh, uh, page thirty-six, uh, 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 family protection act, uh, 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 lastly, uh, uh, the, uh, gear, uh, sell page forty, uh, uh, sell section, uh, three. Uh, 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 repeal, uh, section twelve, ten, uh, title thirty-three. Uh, 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 this, uh, 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 uh,
Senator Inabu.
So, uh, 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 first, uh, comment, uh, uh, sell page, uh, twenty-four, uh, uh, get it, uh, 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 rehabilitation program, uh, 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 insert, uh, uh, education, uh, when that's, uh, 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 next, uh, the more sell, uh, uh, page, uh, thirty-five, uh, thirty-six. So, uh, 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 so, uh, if you recall, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 genuine, uh, remorseful, uh, 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 crime, uh, 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 commit, uh, criminal offense, while, uh, 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 depart, uh, uh, minimum sentence, uh, 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 sell, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 sell. That's the question, uh, 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 sell repealer, uh, twelve, uh, ten. Twelve, ten. Okay, uh, twelve, ten. Uh, uh, my, uh, 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 identification of employee subject to testing. Yeah, sir, existing, uh, 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 existing, uh, uh. Take, uh, 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 National Civil Service Board, which is, uh, 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 um, shall identify and provide to the minister a list of employment classifications and the names of all employees, uh, occupying such classification whose, uh, assigned duties include operation of vehicles, heavy equipment, uh, or, uh, or, or whose duties include functions, the negligent performance of which would constitute a threat to public health or safety. So you know, uh, 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 sell over, uh, designated employee. So you know, uh, 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 page, uh, 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 fifteen? Why say?
The page, uh, uh?
Why say? Uh, again, uh, 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 yeah, so, uh, 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 one?
Hello, uh, 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 Senator, uh, 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 uh.
So, uh, 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 especially, uh, chairman, uh, 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 chairman, uh, 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 Asukuma employer, las el raise a suit, based on their rights to privacy, in mo dekal urior. Nakapresayter se, avai questiononaga, girel tiyel sentencing guidelines, which is spelled out on page thirty-five. Sel, mobe sel, mobe section three, three, one, four. Ah, mal di, akmal apresayter, tiyagumral, wasen bral giren ngari. Sel concerner nga, ke, ngadiak adra la, el ngarir adra la, seal help pergi. Tiyadra lil oy say, ngarinya existing RPL or sentencing guidelines, sel altair. Or ngarinya telela adal merawur, lalbol, la tiyang, yudul, wasi, tiyak guk na ba leitang, ra, plen, you know, tiyala adra la, madu ismung. Kalel kuk, ospe tiyal kuk. Toodra sentencing, I don't know, ma kura di, questiononaga, muna chairman, magamitil, wasi. Are there other RPLs with sentencing guidelines, sel ngarinya telel tiyang, el, kuk. Uh, ngel goram, madu, la adra la, el kuk raise a issue, or ospe tiyagid. El besel section, magel definition, sel kuk, ubtiya client, sel, watimne gregi, Mr. President. I totally support it, and the akura di concern is sagid, sulang eh, Mr. President.
Senetor Nakamura.
So, Representative Teal, um, I stand to be corrected, and the, uh, as far as I know, ndiakangol, el, RPL ngarinya, gyal eh, sentencing guidelines, sa watiya. Tiyang, el sentencing guidelines, uh, will only work, amo, polospe ngi, agar gil, sel adak, or edin lamogilty. Hmm, ma adamo guilty, eh, nyam armada la agar gil, le, blol ngani, duda se, pre-sentence investigation, PSI. Etu mo adal may, eh, ngal adam armada la agar gil, ma agil la agar gil sentencing, ngi agar gila, mo mesegagid, el guideline. Ekmasenggang, uh, possession of one, less than one gram ma ice, ma, masa five years. Mandatory, or akdepart, akortas on diyang kah mal, masa mutu, masa telel ngal, adam, departing morior sel fa. Uh, disukuma akortas, design el mo depart, orsel mil minimum, blal sete ringa la. Ngirel omes, ngirel consider, egagid rogul factor sa ngasit ya. Uh, mang, hmm. Um, ay, ay, diakumbrangal, asen sebe la, mal mo misa madu isra adra la, di tiyel, ding daxel, ubtiya, sentencing guidelines, ubtiya, bayenten ngi.
Senetor ngire bangla.
Oh, bro, sir?
Oy.
Okay. Uh, ukti, regal, mura di constitutional question, and since it hasn't been done before. Uh, defined sentencing guidelines, akura di concern sel telela, maybe not in this case, or a convicted drug felon offender. Uh, someone brings up a constitutional issue, wasi, tiyel. Yes, el bola, tiyang overreach, or sel kuk jurisdiction, or Supreme Court. Uh, logiu tiyala, say, mura di questiononaga, masa kalmo understander ngi, tiyagotoklo tutelin. El ngida, masa el altair, ma, egele, batogale, negotiation, ma ngarang, ma ada, buktabelchil, mal meriowma. Tiyagumdan, gumral, wasen sumaklisi, ding akura begikra, someone raising a lawsuit later. Or a constitutional lawyer, wasi, oh, tiyang overreach, tiyana nganak, turn not move sin, perin sel akort, diakal gira, masa. Sel, watimne concern, sulang, Mr. President.
Sam longer, si, senetor Nakamura.
Okay, akmal mo, sulang eh, president, akadak, angakura, omkura, sel, senetor, uh, whip, se, ma understander, question ngi. Um, olbi na kalula, wa, ngarinya kisi el malurala. Olbi na kalula, mlakmula, sel ula, ay, sa possession of ice, medel fedemine, magagid, fentril, mapkitel, drugs, ah, tiyagid, ah. Khaol court, agirme sentencing, ngi, mo tiyagid, el mo tiya. Se, abo the ay gagid, sentencing guidelines, sa, ngablamri giling, mosrogustaita, blamri giling, ma federa, ngarinya sentencing guidelines. Uh, mang ngarinya kisel, olbiya kalula, wasi, oy, khaol court, aginakmulka, se, sentencing, sa dulo lela five maten, lela akmul oy say. Eh, di khaos, sebe em, la, gi, masa, biskaklisi em, ma ka, se em, el moriora, afar. Asukumu kabetigil, aset ngal adak, angarinya, batogal medicating factor, sel ngil, sebe el, el yil, aset, bata sa telela ngal buig. Segid al teal, el mora, gamiti, Mr. President, akurulmno, sa, se, segid al teal, el muti gagid, ngal agid, el. El tira, uh, amil attack, they were at the wrong place, at the wrong time. Uh, tamal, attack, la, el kuk momrura, uh, madimnakal girile, emle me, ga mistake. Melakadi di stripper, sel, five years, eh, eh, ngariki. Meda basa, meda punga li, ah, akort, malchira, be ngi, el wes, agel background, ringi. Eh, ele sa, asenggang, sebenggang, sengungila, duda basa teal. Segid akora wal, uldasu, girel tiyal sentencing guideline, uh, eh, Mr. President.
Senetor ngire bangla.
Mal misaula, chairman, namgataklisi, sel, ki statement, blal me, geringa, chairman, wasi, tiyang, batogal, blura, giling. State, county, or whatever, uh, ospe, or osisu, they use sentencing guidelines. Anga understand, wasi, gido, ospe, akis, lora, blura, giling, in the absence, uh, uh, issue that has not been raised in the court, sumo. Tiyak ora, miskaka confidence, wasi, tiyas, el urior, mal apresayter se, chairman, mal saul, Mr. President.
Okay, halek, masa telela, ngarinya ngartil al sal, ngang, masa telela, senetor mariure, awurura, senetor mariura, mo meba. Diak? Diak? Diakal sal, mal mo meba gaminten?
Diak, titi, tiyagid, president, akad, maringa sulala, chairman, tegid, al teal, leng. Hmm, tamral ngarinya, adal, mo, uh, tumila, tal, mal ligel, goradi, madelbar, demor ngi. Um dasu, misliat, ngiril, misliat, al, malsum, sebe el, ngal adal, mo uning. Eh, bol sebe edel, mo truagid, process, and bol sebe edel, kuk, giri, godabngiak, watsengel, emrgol, chat, al, el mo, tumo, improve, aklangar ngi. Akwadi duli, segid, president, leng, giret tiyel, masa, tiyel, togora, draks. Yarbulis, adimran, mo kosa. Eh, diakal adal, mo apply. Ma, na kara, mo apply, mo, mo her, adak, odblulme, mora, kubulis, eh, la, ospe, sen sel, mo, adak, odblulmo, lisaklar, ngal agid. Mang um dasu, egagid, dili gal, girel, omes, wasi, gada, ngara, chup tiga, ngarinya, telela, kalel, sebe edel, masliat, al, el gor, al tank, sebe edel, mo, tensel, mo uning, adak, takl, se, godabmo, ospe ngi. Akwadi duli, segid, leng, mal uning, tiyel, uldasu, wasin, la, di, duga, watsi, adak, ngul, ismili, no, simra. Bata sa, te, telela, court, mo, mesel, tril, wasenggang, ngarinya, telela, mo tumo, unila, ra, blul, godab, masa, al, geringa, watsengel. Mal, maringa sulat, chairman, gil, segid, president, sulang.
Okay, me, senetor Aldabel.
Uh, um, sulap, president, akti, sadil butulkobak, al mor, segid, el, el togora mandatory, uh, testing, especially, mal, adak, abalment, um dasu, sel, mal uning. Al pale, sel, girel, um dasu, ngi, president, el mo, nyam, mandatory testing, el mor, adak, ogul, ogura, abalment. Was, a, setra, uning standard, uh, uh, employees, abalment, more official, sel direct. Andi, uh, uh, ngwagel, blal, blal, du, chairman, mongwa, ngani, segid, balgora, challenge, sel, brurala, al, moa bol. Uh, lolupter, sel kuklama, tel, ah, adra, privacy, ngi. Ma, akwadi sokal, raise it, teale, teak point, eh, chairman, madu, mesel, ngi, masukumu, nsebe el, da, diregal, watsangsi, deri. Uh, uh, kora, malat, kekma, sel, dral ilmo, or partra requirement, ra, adal, morior, abalment. So, if you are to apply, to work for the government, al, with, uh, more mort, or more, uh, position, abalment. Eh, bol, diregal, one requirement, el, girem, el, one waiver, sagid, el, number ten, for privacy, for the purpose, tegid, testing. Hmm, om waiver, sagid, el, uh, right, rago. Uh, uh, for the purpose, uh, mandatory, uh, requirement, uh, testing, ra, draks. El mora, ogul, adal, tira, employees, abalment, uh, dral li, go, oy, say, gagid, language, galal, kalabol, sebe el, gor, asatisfar, sagid, el. El requirement, sel, sagid, kuk, ngaraginstitution, el kuk, walt protector, uh, privacy, ra, adam. Akwadi, me, point out, sagid, al, sebe el, bodam, mesel, ngi, dire. Sulang.
Me, kun tira, shirt, risese, teongis, sesionergid, el mora, order. Flor leader.
Uh, president, akad, nar sel, uh. Standing gamiti report, sel, mla, ngi, discussion, egol, egol, reses, mla, ekmu turis, se, tra, motion, wasi, da, adapt, sel, standing gamiti report, twelve dash four seven. House bill, uh, twelve dash one, dash one, ST one.
Senetor Nakamura.
Mr. President, gida, danga, tiyel, standing gamiti, twelve dash forty-seven? Twelve dash forty-seven? Oy say. Eh. Andeke. Akora, mla, odardrit, tiyel, gamiti report, president, mdeku dingil, aseng.
Oy say.
Oh.
Senetor Flor Leader.
Di, sagid, di, akad, gor, mla, ngarinya, gil, mle, concern, magradim, mora, uh, shirt, risese, gor, mlsada, gagid, mle, decide, wasi, daba, tiyad, ngua, gamiti report, ma, dora. Sukumaria, concern, ader, dora, uh, ngua, vil, second reading, ma, dabadur, reading, as sebe edel, blula, floramentmentum.
Hmm, oy say, senetor Nakamura, mka, dapos, dapos, senkiyo.
Oy, oy say.
Okay.
Ma, motion, uh, bril, adapt, tiyal, standing gamiti report. Okay, mka, sidamotion, nam dung, mka, dmosenkiyo, tirger, rogul, go ngert, tiyal, standing gamiti report. Twelve dash four seven. Tirgerela, house bill twelve dash one, dash one, ST one, al du, oy. Om tok.
Namoy, flor leader.
Si, mla, standing gamiti report, sel, ayram, na, special gamiti report, ngarisil, supplemental gamiti report, ma, kubil, different action, sel, ma, next, sesionergid.
Sidamotion, nam dung, tirger, rogul, go ngeldu, oy. Om tok. Namoy say, flor leader.
Dora. Order of the day, dora, ayram ten, ndiakangara, ayram ten. Dora, vil kalender, akmu, dasa spend, ra, galender, sebe the place, tiyel, uh, Senate bill, uh, twelve dash forty-four, under a first reading.
Sidamotion, nam dung, eh, sen, clear, gum, ivat title.
Senate bill number twelve dash forty-four. Bill for na, amen, title, twelve, the national code, to structure, di, establish, office of the national security coordinator. Tiyel, dasu, mala, mbladra, title, tour, the national code, imogut, makti, sel, obisera, national security coordinator. Tiyel, dasu, mala, vito, senya, ta, president, sel, kontpaulis, by request.
Si, sel, ul, dasu, mola, eh, se, by request, mung, diyaga, sal, meka, gamint. Sukumu, diyage. Sir. Eh?
Uh, sel, mle, motion, emotional place, eh, pasat, tiyel, bill, a first reading.
Okay.
Fig, namoy, ivat title, ngi.
Tirger, rogul, go ngert, tiyal, uldasu, mola, rakotlo, ngi, vel, du, oy. Eh, tiyad, asain, ngi, mora, chairman, JGA. Eh, eh, chairman, tiyad, diregal, uning, lor, udal, leng, giret, creator, sel, obisera, mre, duma. Flor leader.
Eh, dora, second reading, ma, kubil, pasra, house bill, twelve dash one, dash one, ST one. Ra, otlo, mi vel, ah, ungeru, lo, mi vel. ST one, eh?
Si, sel, ul, dasu, mola, albo, dollar, ngi, ongeru, lo, ngi vel, eh, tiyaman, uning, discuss, ngi, ra, gamiti report, mukumdasu, eh. Kamil, ngatya, rogu, aman, uning, understand, ngi, ma, adra, blul, but, tam, tam, lamu, uning, ro, si. Eh, tirger, rogul, go ngert, tiyal, uldasu, mola, ro, ongeru, lo, ngi vel, du, oy.
Oy.
Om tok. Namoy, flor leader.
Dora, tur, dige, president, ngarisil, Senate bill, ngari, ma, kubil, pasra, uh, Senate bill, twelve dash twenty-seven, ST one, ra, ongede, lo, banol, ngi vel.
Yes. Flor leader, ngarinya, amendment, el, ngara, ulala, mka, misara, madame, eh, mle, motion, el. El dungu, eh, bata, telela, introduce, sel, mlsodi, eh, eh, the senkiyo, ngi. Se, sebe edel, di senkiyo, ngi, lobengel, angles, sen, somad, senkiyo, ngi, separate. Hmm, flor leader.
Well, written for amendment, eh, president, ma, kubil, pasra, adapt, sagid, written for amendment, lo, ferri, ya, uh, senator, Sungino.
Sidamotion, nam dung, eh, second, madon, tira, senator, Sungino, explain, ra, sel, amendment.
Sulra, artellege, Mr. President, mal uning, itasi, smelgao, marogul, senators. Tiyel, floor amendment, el do, eh, dringia, amo, amend, ra, section two, ra, tiyel, bill. Moedra, sel partra. Sel subsection nine, o three, sel prohibition and restriction on the use of tinted vehicles window. Sel dia, mo, the director of, uh, Bureau of Public Safety, may exempt, following from the requirement of this section. Sel number one, uh, hmm, or eding, ngaral, sel, la, komasin, tiyel, amendment, tiyel, amendment, komasi, government, uh, director. Amos, beel, ngari, sel, telela, eh, exempt, gyal, mla, government, for official business. Disel, floor amendment, el, do, eh, dringis, number two, who has a privately owned vehicle, if the owner provides a request for medical accommodation. Signed by a licensed physician stating that the owner suffers from a permanent medical condition. And that, and that, as a result of the permanent medical condition, prolongs exposure to the sun, poses a significant health risk to the owner. Tegid, el section, uh, mla, ngi, uh, diregal, blal, dora, mesal, adra, blu. El diregal, much, me, ra, abadngel, ra, uh, adiela, sils. Hmm, dro, sagid, conversation, gido, lobengel, eh, ndirigal, mal, mle, ask, komasi, asbeel, eh, diregal, bata, telela. Ah, wang, gagid, adra, blul, mo, osbeel, el, director, am, sa, sagid, tiyal, asukuma, uh, toktang, ngi, malubeng, hmm. Well, toktang, ngi, uh, uh, utmakla, babi, el, lo, otilk, ma, singgang, ospe, uh, tinted, window. Mel, bata, telela, director, bil, diregal, me, gagid, sagid, decision, masa, telela, ngi, gagid, adra, blu. Mal, katmakla, amnil, mo protector, ngi, ra, adiela, sils. Sagid, adi, el gusel, floor amendment, eh, donit, a support, abekla. Sulang, Mr. President.
Maria, sal, lo, tioldo, sal, girel, say. Diak? Mang, kud, senkiyo, amendment, eh, flor, lobengel, a bill, gerd, di, senkiyo, ra. Mat, tirger, rogul, go ngert, tiyal, amendment, el du, oy. Om tok. Namoy, flor leader.
Nga, dora, namu, diya, amendment, dora, discussion, a bill, al, sum, diya, da. Al, sum, diya, da, el mal, mora, amendment, motion, adapt, tiyal, pasat, tiyal, Senate bill, twelve dash twenty-seven, ST two, ra, ongede, lo, banol, ngi.
Sidamotion, nam dung, eh, second, mung, clear, gum, war, ogul, gol. Senator, eh, sir, Basilius?
Oy.
Senator, si, si, Lila Bell? Senator, ku, ba, ik, ku, inabo?
No.
Senator, Brian Mulire?
Oy.
Senator, si, Creed, Bai, Nakamura?
Oy.
Senator, Edna T, Pedro?
Oy.
Senator, Kichei, Emru, Monzau?
Oy.
Senator, Mark, Eblaurudim? Senator, Vasubi, El Taps, Uino?
Oy.
Senator, Andrew, Tabulwal?
No.
State Ramarcela ma FSM. El no state l'urul girel ogubila ruwa sugal ma yel Koranika yel na il NCD. Emargoe, adurisegid al time eti al mokla bebe ra yel service il boye wellness sentel ngara Marshall Island. Eh me 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 l'mol mal'urur esera ah na na twenty fifteen eh tablo muul merbelau. Segid al dilira Mister President tamle seventy one feet aluminum me l'enkle la Canvas Park. Et ti yidial ngilun monkleltial Canvas ma ah Canvas Park Mission City. Ta provide yidaba yel bebe ra gulul provide la toora iuys, toora math, toora sugal, toora irgid, toora ongo 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 mi'ibun, toora bot ma toora agulul mora ardil ma di ogat moklela vedenye. Seda twenty fifteen eti ramlo muul merbelau loa garu twestra bulur belau. Ma belau so far amla spend ndakal include ra el al ngartian ah six hundred forty six thousand seven hundred forty two dollars il il malartil merbelau et amla eleven times il merbelau me provide ah yigegidil ga'aros el tele tele l'aguluu. Segidil investment eh Mister President ngara el ol mal dar tel telael ah yel savings il merabulur belau. Ah worth ringiya seven million hundred sixty six thousand six hundred sixty dollars. Il de alul dimo korteal triple mnerelang yigida vedenye wa se ngariyayigel korra prostheses malubeng yigel kladal el mora ulo'id malubeng ulo'id etulava one point five million il worth ra yigegidil merbelar el al el altaim la garbelau. Sel temil merbelato urulabangela Ministry ra held ya di emphasize ringiwa segingartian el merulega yidil buto ol urur. Di sel mal hara rendira ngara mission ra Canvas Park wa se bo se bedel urur il girela overall il il improvement malubeng tretakelau ah gululara bulur belau. Masaya lur tringi eh mal'ol mal merbelau m'arinyat teller bebe ra Senator Se'mitra trigel ngartian elang rahasus ma teregririn sa yigel lur urul mal buto. Mua segid eh Mister President ah old ah olbira olula ah Senator olbira olula l'obangela House of Delegates ah umte'era ader belau emo odersitial resolution l'momreng ah asulela Canvas Park Missions emo otisil mol el appreciation malubeng supporter gid il mora yigirogul togora blarrul il girela held ra bulur belau. Direkl bol blautakwa se olbira olulau ah mo direkl umte'era ader bela emo otisil il mal mol l'momreng al saul il mora trigel founders trigel Mister and Mrs Spence trigelrogul ururtra ah Canvas Park trigelrogul staff mar volunteer yigida vedenye wa se yigel volunteer ngarbelau ngariyam lara Montana, lara Hawaii, lara Oregon, lara Bercle bulur ablo mregel emlotma yigel merbelar el altaim. Maluwa isesel kapitial resolution amora Mister Jamie Spence yigel founder eh President ra Canvas Park Missions. Mister William McLean ngartian elang yigel physician assistant eh Chairman ra Board ah directors ra Canvas Park Missions. Mamah tuis Excellency Surang Luips Junior represent the Republic of Belau. Mora Honorable Hankons Paulus President ra Senate of the twelve olbira olulau. Mamora Honorable Gibson Canal Speaker House of Delegates of the twelve olbira olulau. Sula Mister President akman m'rengasule ra rogul Senator si girela tal supporter mora Canvas Park Missions. Surang.
Surange Senator Kuartey, Senator Mario.
Se President takriyal mo b'angela Vice President Kuartey ma Bercle Senator sa direkana l'momreng asulel tal la adal in ayegel l'amadura tal resolution wa se malkuwa savings ra blal lootir belau akumda se se yamne moktegar tal se lur urur tal NHI. Yamne mokteganyawaseka do merur ngil dyaka do promotoramora referan. Do merur ngil m'elisi emo m'elisi ira tal hospital yigid mo se el mokmokla yigegidil lur urur alsel belau mendakal bol topa do yigegidil se lur urur ngil belau do da merbelau. Belat timla otisegidil wa se tiga tiga selle metabai melme merulayigegidil buto ol okmon dyaka l'tir eto godsendek til mora ikir belau. Mal buto gar ader na meru se yigida bol ma iselme buto gar ader na uter mul orir eh ng'a amlo merulu o'idora ikir belal entsegid tiga tiga yigidil tim. Akora au uringal ho se urkum se ikir til il u'tur m'igil en amnesweka do mo t'egidil tim ndigida mal m'rengasule ra yigayigidil services el provide el may. Eusultai maqmodur yigel tar tigel tokta ra rahasus sale direkal ngara operation direkal wa se mal ngil ra ngurlen. Belau ngariyaytokta ra belau ul direkal wal korra ah masubun mo oh to adra iuys wa se se yigida direkal ma mokloan l'masulel. Guk ah operate yigidil blala t'igidil blarrul orir belau wa se ayegi segida direkal ma moseyra bulur belar ra t'egidil senoralar m'ora referan. Yigidil lur urur maqmal di m'rengasule ra t'irwa t'ir Bercleade m'rengasule ra t'egidil services el provide el may. Sula President.
Surange Senator Mario, Senator Lebel.
President ak suranga ak t'iregal di mobangela flow leader eh direkal ma m'rengasule la Chair Chairman Kuartey. Al malno se el mendaswi t'egidil al resolution il nyama amatau reri t'igal al t'egidil grupa Canvas Park eh direk al mo recognize asel value ra services el tiramla odersin mal bulur belau ma ader belau yigut t'egidil programer tin. Akora di malatke Chairman Kuartey kmasin direkal ah sel parta tal resolution il il yigel gapira igabol direkal se bedel lo durukla gapil m'ora ah ta'kal Vice President eh direkal Ministera Ministry Health and Human Services. Yigaya al guk l'madal ah ah kavalmenter belau lur urur in partnership l'montir t'igal ad to uspa adospea facility t'ir ma yigel al direkal guk partnership er t'ir l'montir l'durur employees er t'ir l'ongasewa igamabol se bedel mal'ol m'angani segidam sisil partnership ma korra collaborationa dalongela Ministry yigidam ma t'egidil ala. Sula.
Maluwa isesel Senator Lebel. Clear tech note. Flow leader.
Dungia akal t'igal dyaka da adapter resolution.
T'igelrogul gonger tal joint resolution number dash twelve dash fourteen urdu oi. Umto, namay. Flow leader.
Sel one of resolution ngara ah direkala ndel adaction se direkal le differen se a differisel reporting ne differtal resolution manexel session. Item fourteen ra introduction of bills ah introduction of resolutions item fourteen. Item fifteen ra mislenios communication ak direkal address aspenda kalender ma t'irekal place mobile place ra mislenios communication twelve dash two three twenty five ra ndel ra mislenios.
Sinamushonam dungeseng t'igelrogul gongeldu oi. Umto, namay. Flow leader.
Yigid ya mislenios communication eh President ngara madada yigel mislenios communication twelve dash three oh seven il mora twelve dash three twenty five ma t'irwita Bercleade am note ed move an mora item sixteen ra mislenios business.
Mislenios business, Senator Rudim.
Hoy President mal ngil go se asge. President ta miskam ngaka disoka no tra system tech no tra miscam twelve dash three one eight. Se sele babringela acting public auditora m'argamister President loa isra performance auditor m'igatmokla. Yigirensel ADB cash law n'gitmaklia emoyur ngiya Ministry of Finance ma PPUC. Msao drap payment tal tilow dal moharar ADB law no despite ra concerns eleven dash thirty one. La se godol godi engm'arinyawil el du ra dalongela ADB ma Republic l'mes se singalamndakal mokmokla tal warren suwera gulur urur ma iray. Yigida di mal'ol mal'harar ngi se amne ontil olbira glulau. Mamne question eh Mister President l'modasa auditora mamne kirirkuwa se seru dou dal tilow d'mlarinyakrisiela minister l'otok daudou du boy moharar ablansel dyaka ngal'el la PPUC. Misel m'mes se tal reporta m'mame kula se m'lay in compliance tal report la auditin. Ndilega person ngarinyak questionimak m'mes se ngi ra performance. Di t'igelakansuranga Mister President ra agidroguli mal adal olava drual boy l'mte'era agency la kabulmenter ndak l'mte'era di tir mal iba klokli ra blirir. Statement l'momduwa ra adal urur la kabulmenta. Malubeng agency la kabulmenter moma lo gota'ol le ngalakra jurisdiction er t'ir. Dungdasel lam mokmokra bebe ra agency il direk el great ra confusion ra bulu. Ma krisoka no tra page six se Mister President r'telgamitir tal audit reporta. Selvam m'mes se requirement ra auditora yigel di state opinion and the facts. Wa se ngutirakralla, ngutirakramoktegaralla l'mo oi taudou d'marwi rolel adam dimlaq yigel di tu. Eda yigel bol ol angaka ora commentaries la se tiya m'le ngil m'le m'knitl ora mo reflect ra personal opinion. Selvam m'mes se sel audit reporta engmo'mul wa se public auditora mal oyeng malubeng mokamendra ROP ma Ministry of Finance edega mo oyeng ra olbira glulal merura urerid. Ayegel selvola yigel efikse Mister President ra ladal audita ulm'mal stricta efikse t'ir ma toora ader alla. Yigel President ra Independent Reporta. Le selvolo ng'oywar ngiwa se sum audit reporta se engmo nga se ng'ongen tumde'mre' dagutmaklila lagamitamala isel belau. Se opinion al dyaka ngara facts ra igatto'oi. Hmm subject interpretation ra olbira glulau ma ROP. Ma ng'ongen l'mla gutmaklaur e'elal ndiktol ngi ta President ra selvam kampira yigidil audit reporta. Masitilow dal mora teleministry ob education ra selegrassuits audit l'maldi blagatakwa se yigiru dou dra grassuits ra xia'bar el mora emo ilom arabas ra prura iray. Di state la se ngutul tirakralla stop. Ndidiakamersa babringela Director mo ol ngara sele audit reporter ngi. Di silbor tal egal Ministry of Finance ngariyababringela former Minister gal'eb ngat tal reporta. Ma digodol ngi ta ngi Mister President ta sel consistency la independence legal obis il mega statements. Tay dyaka dil ng'ite Mister President l'mal obis ra public auditor mora rogul adal umte'era boy ngara igal dro'ale l'mte'era kabulmenta. HNCs mal ngara Minister ma Director ma Chief l'mangidil adal l'mamot'odu'lo l'mte'era kabulmenta. Yigadol ngi ta sebo multirakra protocol. Stick within the jurisdiction of multirakralla misel l'mot'odu'el ngariyayigela se stay within your lanes eda il gara il bo ngariyayigidil e'ngaklen. Ah omu'lo la ng'ra'lo mangmosi'el ngariyako operation mal bo ngariyodit entse'el ngariyawatchetan balance tal overall system l'antu itsel. Di segid eh Mister President l'mlatoh d'mang ah gamitregal mutl mo review ngi gidet l'mes se ngi ke m'le issue se le ng'ongel d'mlar raise ra issue ra general authorization and appropriation ra udo dal top la se m'galado re'ra batjet ra bulur belau. Mendakal dil lual open discretion ra Ministry il mo topa daudou d'mt'el dyaka clear language se yigal se udo du boy m'orgel. Sel m'mes se egal tal program ra NDP ma egal bebe ra bulu. Emo m'se ndimran tal batjet the process ada amne generalized ya dimran mal'ol mo komakai il mo m'gotukla se egal udo du boy mo allocate de mo appropriate dal mora galat tal etay. Le ga le ga yigidil mo mo vague language malu mo discretionary power. Ayegida morul ya ayga yigidil eh eh questions ra adal guk m'se interest ra bulu. Mo raise yigidil issue ra discretionary power. Surang Mister President.
Surange Senator Rudim, Mariana Odo, Senator Aldabel.
Em sula tal eh President President el al el sande tal el al biga akdisoka reporta m'arau ma olal l'masen l'mosa edel na vinsil korra flow l'aldabe'ra ah adra pacific l'mle m'lera bulur belar el al big awlel el al big. Ya sel l'mogodongonik m'se second Pacific Disaster Risk Management Ministerial Meeting. El ble bulur bela m'legoster ngiya Vice President Oilo ma ra adala ma t'igel adra ne moa t'igaya ukuram le hosta t'ir. Presidente gamle asan yigidil mo atenda yigel selwal welcoming ah 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 opening ceremony t'ir ma direct closing ceremony t'ir l'mle conclude rahasus. Amnosa edel join ra Vice President ma ah Vice President Oilo eh direkal Ministera Health and Human Services ma direk flow leader Umetaro House ma terror minister sa Minister Justice ma Minister RCTD ma t'igel directors ma ma manager se yigel program ngiya kukangesterato'ora disaster ma ah yigidil program ma risk management el kuk mal ngam sabak ra ader belar ra sel guk nganiata atautadiro'ra to'ora disaster la yo natural ah cause. Eh Mister President ta maktisoka loa iset m'se tamal m'awilani ritigal okiarigid. Vice President ta mal m'awila delivery ngi seal opening ceremony eh direk mal m'awil mal subertir rahasus ra amle m'rengasule rir two days il low meeting. Amnosa bil guk conclude a meeting er t'ir ngariyayigel guk wal al final decisions of the May yigirela osabaklele m'elisi yigel guk initiative ira to'ora disaster risk management. El nyaa ah omra kmasi Vice President ta mo odurokla otushu se yigidil wal korra a final camino gay malubeng ah result ra ureril meri leadership m'galal m'mes se ngi ra. Akti m'rengasule me President amnosa emel guk tutkaga makm'la umte'era ah yigidra Senetel mo atenda yigidil al event ra el al big. Direk President el al big ra Eli ak t'iregal m'awinya te'legal guk mo atendra ah biosecurity seminar. Tiya l'ulungatmokar ngiya egal civil societies il nyaa agukol ngasewa yigel agency la kabulmenter yigirela to'ora biosecurity. Yigel meroba igale ukuram kitera t'ela armada lomel ma ayama ayegidil guk ma m'ulim to mal environment er gid ma ah ayegil guk sorsera gal'eda ader belau. Mal m'awil tal seminar eh Mister President eh direk mal butoka ng'il informationak silu be m'urulak nol ngi ta tik m'se me pomser egal presentation ra g'miv le ngariyamal lwan ra interesting presentation il ble se ringi ah ndak sal m'de'mre' kmasi gomnan otisir ngi se l'dora ra tal ra'el mo oya'ak kuksal mo 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 sel saydra yimiligel mo obdul orior. T'egom ndeku de'mre' gomnan otisil sel m'mes se tal arion embutoka garrgal m'lamath. Ngatya kula ra'el m'se l'mes se tal se bulayigel yada m'mes se tal il bebular arion l'ego m'mes a gomnotisabetol garrgal m'lamath. Yigel President ta udoo idin mal dimnakudanyak t'iregal gomne otisir ngi ni dimnakude'me yang aru ku'ka betp'edenye la garrgal l'ba'iga particular ding yigel udoo idil domgodong ludoo idil garrgal. Yigel gongani abesil al raktra dal adal lom len na merbelau wal blal tamnamatigisegidil al rakta melat to'urur losi collect m'se tam m'garangi eto korra experimenta ga'aros el solution insel en se biril el help il al m'odisegidil aramang ndakal l'olamol mal egal udoo ya diregal dimnakudanyak amdel di garrgal ruang esar ma iray ma yimilig ma alangat pang. Ma ayga yigidil mo obdula saudra rabalda. Eh yigel mo obdula nor da alkon dyaka udoo idir ngi. Ayegidil expert t'mle egangal l'ulaisak m'se t'egidil m'wal korra ng'igel bebe ra gargar belau yigiridil m'sabak le protect et t'egidil ligangal rektela dalwa garrgal m'lamas ngiya wal korra mal alarming. Eh gida dirgo rogul m'de'mre' m'se egal udoo ida direk sorsera gal'ela ruwa blol m'olik. Eh ngariyayigel simra ruwa udoo idem r'ongen guk mo concentrate ta ruwa blol m'olik ra yigegidil el basium m'ng kadakora direkal take it to accounter kmasing ng'ongela diregal da put some attention el mora wa yigidil korra ah alarming event el guk mo affect ra to'ora forestry ra bulur belau ma ayegil guk held ra adal lom ra bulur belau. Then cloud to telel diregal da ora odaktakau du sweda dosiga dalongasewa yigegidil el el civil societies ma al adal tira oriritol ngasewa yigidil ah m'sabak la yigidil to'ora alugelak langarmang. Akadisoka point out asel President electiriga magora m'anglo oh silu mal gua tong ng'il information il l'maseng appropriate yigidil ngara leadership ma mega policy decisions once bedel direkal mo take inget to account ma sumong ma'aniyani del guk yigidil l'ongasewa lo giwa to'ora yosang. Eh once bedel already kita vedenye m'oktegar yigidil urur. Akmal di ngutal te'ale mal m'rengasule t'igel adal tira ne organista mal di ader bela President t'igal m'mle President ta mal di with exception yigidil el adamrigel el diregal el altaim ah civil societya ol uspe' ngil korra ba'elisist l'ongasewa t'ira yigidil korra scientific studies ra urerid. M'di t'igal nar sel seminar Eli amal di m'le ader belau tamral al openly et siera yigidil experience er t'ir ma yigel guk blal suwel yigirela to'ora osabaklela l'ugelak langarmak ti m'mt'mal m'rengasule aygal effort er t'ir. Sula President.
Yamal sula eh Senator Lebel eh m'rengasule m'masule m'l'mter yigidil m'ra yigidil meeting eh Senator m'sula. Mariana Odo. Senator Kuartey.
Sula eh Mister President katiso'ol ah do mesel mislenis miscam twelve dash three oh eight. Ya Miss Commander Obisera Special Prosecutor ah subject niya expenditure for FY twenty twenty five. Ngariyayigedeval paragraph seriori. Ti maqm'la review ngi Mister President korra sera da 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 confirm ngal el espil korra t'igaga tal l'dogododu'ri bododin wa se ngara korra mal product. Ma g'ulitam ma sel appropriate el gamitir gabo se l'mar ngariyate'lele l'gole ah korra oversighte da dogodu'ra obisera ah espil girela yigel korra peni'ul urerel malubeng efforti. Sula.
Surange Senator Kuartey, Mariana Odo. Senator Lamson.
Sula Mister President tal te'ale. N'sage Mister President il magotl l'urenasulem. L'urenagobetsel l'urenasulela chairman gamitira banking ma insurance ma financial marls. Ah t'ino ter Mister President ra sel press kam twelve one oh eight tiya babringela President l'mergau day tenya November four. El oaiser gau yigel ng'er ngil m'laragamitira banking el bebe ngil questiona m'lar bebe ra Senator si girel se loan agreement ra don'lel belau ma Saudi development development fund. Mister President tal babringela President Surang Luips Junior ah amalu'sel mergau el oaisel mo longera yigel el question se gamitira banking ma insurance and financial marls. Altobed m'ongil girel se loan agreement ra don'lel belau ma Saudi Saudi fund development. Malgopun ne eugera tal babringela chairman October twenty nine n'ara Senator Basilius eh usultai me eh il girela ne eugera tal babringela ah chairman Basilius ra October twenty nine. Na ngiya yigel question se il girela sel babringela ah sel financial institution gamisiona FIC meri ah gamitira Senet ma direk question se la Senator Rudim il girel t'egidil proposal loan ma direk capacity ra NDPP il girela ponsebel mo oh responsible girel tal loan malubeng dia. Direk m'lar ngiya k' question se m'lar Senator Kuartey m'aramusao t'egidil babringela President Luips oais oaisegidai yigel ng'er ngil girela yigidil question se tilow ra bebe ra Senators il girel t'egidil Saudi loan ra don'lel belau ma bulur Saudi Arabia il girela fifteen million. Mister President akman m'rengasulela Senator Basilius m'arulia ah sel gamitiri port l'mogodekun supplemental report yigirel tal Saudi loan. M'ayegel mulukwem Mister President lu'ule l'mnedifera action tal gamitiri port malu elel yigirel tal loan agreement. Malatke m'se yigidil d'swemen malatke l'mogdong ra special session ra elan m'sande l'se'ela erangalela Senet m'onge'tiang el agreement ebol ng'ania telea Senators rogul m'mes se sel. Responsible President Luips el meri Senet m'skya m'striatelia rogul Senators t'mo m'se t'egidil el loan agreement direk m'mlesamit se palisil girel se fiscal responsibility and debt management act. El nyaa le lureisenyasenetor m'sao yigidil il girel m'mokmok prese yidawal bol t'egala eneridil on'tauta t'yang el fiscal responsibility and debt management act eh Mister President. T'iregal notice el babringela President l'mergau August twenty five ere la ragra twenty twenty five el gongel l'm'ngela ablera Senet al sum g'domodisayda t'igidil loan pol adres tal housing crisis el bank ngiya bulur galau. Ma mal m'rengasuleme President ma chairman ra banking kamerim ma rogul Senatorsel. T'igel gamitii members m'mlesayin se gamitiri port l'm'ngelsel supplemental report la t'egidil Saudi loan l'm'lar ra banking gamitii. Omansela.
Direk Odo. Flow leader. Direk Odo mislenisel nde agora announcement. Ameri g'utya sertrises yapay. Sertrises. Dungdongaseshonur yigidil m'ra order. Flow leader. D'mlar ah Mr. President temra announcement eh ta dyaka announcement m'ng to'ora adjumenta ma qm'uma don'ali tal blal n'sanaday. Sinamushonl k'da mosanaday ma t'igelrogul gongel du oi. Umto, namay se.